Welcome to Meet the Candidates, a League of Women Voters ABC forum for candidates running for the city of Champlin, Ward 4 seat. Thank you to the candidates who are present this evening, Tim LaCroix and Sam Mawangie, and also to QCTV for making this event possible. This year, League of Women Voters is generally holding our Meet the Candidates forums without an audience to provide a safe environment for the participants. I'm Wes Falconett, a member of the Anoka Blaine Coon Rapids area League of Women Voters, and I'm a resident of Andover, so I do not have a vote for this city council position. The League of Women Voters does not support or oppose any political parties or candidates for office. The League does help citizens become informed voters and advocates for important issues. That's what this forum is about, informing voters. If you are interested in the League, please visit our webpage at l w v a b c m n dot org. Persons of all genders, young persons sixteen and older and older persons are invited to join our organization. We will open with two questions we sent to each candidate. I will direct those two ninety-second introductory questions to the candidates before moving on to questions we received from the public and those we prepared for the forum. We will end with both Mr. Mawangie's and Mr. LaCroix's closing statements. Answers to submitted questions and closing statements are limited to one minute each, except as noted. So let's get started. This first question is going to go to Tim LaCroix. What is your motivation to run for this office? And what experience or knowledge would help you to serve effectively?
Thank you, Wes. Twenty-two years ago, I chose to move my family to Champlin, and we've, my wife and I, Tina, have raised two daughters here over those twenty-two years, who are now adults. And we're pleased that we are now, as grandparents to five grandchildren, continuing to enjoy the great things that our city has to offer. Two years ago, I was appointed unanimously by the city council to fill this Ward 4 city council member's seat when Mayor, the current Mayor, Sabus, was elected to that position. Prior to serving on city council, I was, had served in the planning commission for nine years. The last five of those years, I served as the chair of that. And as you may be aware, the City of Champlin Planning Commission deals with zoning, building issues, land use, and developmental issues, which was great experience in preparing me for the last two years. I also am a, not only live in Champlin, but I also am a business owner in Champlin and understand what it is to own a business and operate here as well. I want to build on the great things that are happening here in Champlin. That's why I'm running. I want to help our community with the challenges that lie ahead. I'd like to, I want to continue to make Champlin a great place to raise our children, and that's why I'm running, Wes. Thank you.
Tim, thank you so much. Now, I will turn to Sam Mawangie, and your question again to you is, what is your motivation to run for this office? And what experience or knowledge would help you to serve effectively?
Thank you so much. My name's, like you say, my name's Sam Mawangie. Motivation, my motivation to run for the City of Champlin Ward Number Four stems from my deep commitment to serving our community and making a positive impact in the life of the resident. I've lived there for the last nineteen years with my wife and three kids, they're all in college. And also, I am actively engaged in various roles such as Champlin Ward Number Four ERS Commissioner and a community volunteer. I have developed a strong understanding of our community needs and challenges. My passion is driven for public service and the desire to be a voice for all the residents, for all the residents drives me to run for this position. My experience in community leadership, working with diverse groups, and advocating for small, for local issues equates me with the knowledge and the skills necessary to serve effectively. I have a proven record of building relationships, organizing community programs, and collaborating with local organizations here. So one more thing, again, I engage a lot through door knocking and make sure that I address the issues of my constituents here. So I believe this experience through engagement and through the engagement, this experience gives me the ability to engage the residents, listen to their concerns, and also work toward meaningful solutions here.
Thank you, Sam. We're coming back to you now for the second introductory question, and that reads, what are your goals for the future of Champlin City Council, Ward 4?
Thanks so much. My goals for the Champlin Ward Number Four, my aim is to build a vibrant, inclusive, and a connected Champlin for all. Right now, if you look at Champlin, Champlin's becoming diverse. We have new people coming, new people, especially new demographics moving to Champlin, so we need a vibrant community for all. Three components, I believe in enhancing our public safety whereby we strengthen community policing and improve a response system here. Again, working with the police and also making sure that the community has a say in what the, on the engagement here. I believe also in fostering inclusivity, promote diversity and inclusion by organizing cultural events, such as like the Taste of Champlin whereby all the residents, they are in the loop, and they come to the events and they're able to participate here. And again, I believe in also increasing our community engagement here, creating opportunities for the residents to have a direct voice in the city projects here through regular town hall meetings, surveys, and also open forums here. And lastly, I know it's not the three, but the third one also, I believe I support infrastructure development, focus on maintaining and improving the infrastructure such as roads, parks, and public amenities, but also through community engagement through public forums and also town hall meeting.
Tim, we're going to give you the same second question. What are your goals for the future of Champlin City Council, Ward 4?
Well, as I've worked in the city council and live in the city, my first and foremost goal is always with the safety of our community. So police, fire, EMS, making sure that we have adequate staffing, that they have the adequate support to do the job they need, to keep our families safe, so we can truly enjoy what we have here. Infrastructure. Champlin, for my years on the council as well as years leading up to it, my colleagues have been hard at work on the infrastructure primarily, particularly the roads and road developments over the last two years. We've done, we've repaired and refinished dozens of miles of roads. We want to continue to do that. And as one of the things that my colleagues in the council will let you know is, I am very concerned about how we spend the taxpayers' money. So we want to get the biggest value for every penny that is spent. Also, I want to see the Mississippi crossings completed. We're looking forward to the construction, the final phase of a restaurant there. A big goal that I have going forward is trail development, particularly along the West River Road and working and pushing Hennepin County to get that trail in sooner than what is already projected. I also want to continue to look for ways to move traffic more efficiently and more quickly and safely through our city. And lastly, we have thirty-two parks in our city. We need to continue to work and enhance those parks and again, make it a place where all people are welcome.
Thank you. Well, guys, now we're done with the prepared questions. We're doing the questions that have been submitted or prepared for the forum. You don't have the written answers for these, and we'll work our way through. We're going to start with Tim LaCroix again. Let's follow up on that last question in the broad sense. And again, some of these questions may touch on things you both have already talked about in your introductory replies. Champlin has changed a lot in recent years. Where do you see Champlin in ten years, and how would you help to achieve that vision?
Champlin has grown considerably. Champlin is a city that, at times, shows its age. So a big part of what we've seen is redevelopment. With that redevelopment has come, as I said, increased traffic. Where do I see Champlin in the next ten years or so? I think traffic is a continued area that we need to work on and project and try to alleviate the pressure. I think continuing on the infrastructure, as I said, everything, we're all getting older, so is our city, and so we need to continue to use our resources. But I continue to see Champlin as a wonderful place, a community to raise families, to live and play and work, and I see that continued growth as we move into the next ten years.
Thank you. Sam, I'll give you the same question, and I'll read it again. Champlin has changed a lot in recent years. Where do you see Champlin in ten years, and how would you help to achieve that vision?
Well, thank you so much. It is true, Champlin, Champlin's changing a lot, and one of the, one of the component is because of we have new, new demographics coming, new demographics moving to Champlin, and the population is growing. So that means that we need to start thinking about the infrastructure. They need to be repaired here. We need to partner with Hennepin County and look for ways that we can be able to bring more money to the, to the, to the city so that we can be able to fix those old roads and infrastructure. In the next ten years, we need to think about the school system here. You know, what kind of schools, do we need to add more schools in the City of Champlin? Do we also to bring more businesses here? You know, if more people, if you're going to bring more, if more people are moving to Champlin, then also let's have an opportunity whereby people will be able to invest in this, in this community and have more business here. So this will be able to have more revenue for the city.
Thank you. All right. The next question, and this one, we don't need you to look ahead ten years, just look ahead to January. What would you like to see, Sam, the Champlin Council take up first after the new council gets organized at the beginning of 2025?
Thank you so much. For me, I think in 2025, I would like to sit down with Hennepin County and try to look at the infrastructure development here. What happened? How can we mediate? How can we put our effort on the table and say, you know, what, we need, we need more revenue for this city? I know there was a time, we talked about, I think someone had mentioned to the press that we want to move to another city, another county, but that should, I don't think that should be the case for me. I think let us have, let's talk to the Hennepin County. Let's, let's look for ways we can be able to bring more revenues, let's build those old infrastructure. Let's have a plan for the next five years, so this plan can be able to benefit the community and also have safety measures like, what do you call like, schools, not schools, but work with the police and make sure that we are all safe and we have a good lighting system and our parks, they are, they are all taken care of here.
Thank you, Tim. You get the same question. What would you like to see the Champlin Council take up first after the new council gets organized at the beginning of 2025?
Well, one of the things that we'll be facing in the summer of 2025 will be the one-hundred-ninth reconstruction. So I think one of the first things we're going to have to do is looking at how Champlin can best address the citizens that live in that community, that, that, that area, as well as it's a major artery getting to all of the Champlin Park schools, a little farther east. So I think really making sure that we have all of our ducks in a row and make sure that we're ready for a very challenging construction season next summer, which I think blends right into the whole infrastructure and development and addressing the traffic flow. We've seen Mississippi crossings will be, again, built out. We need to be prepared for handling the additional traffic that that heavy use will, will develop as well.
Thank you. We're going to change gears a bit. The questioner wrote in, I am worried about crime. What are your thoughts on how you will support public safety efforts? And this will go to Tim LaCroix first.
Sure. Well, I think we're, Champlin is already doing a great job. We have approved of the hiring of up to thirty police officers. I think our new police chief, Chief Glenn, is doing a phenomenal job. We continue to make good hires to fill out that police force. We, we want to make sure that, as a council, as a councilwoman myself, and I think the rest of the city council as well, wants to make sure that our police department has the resources that it needs to be well-trained, to be well-equipped. The, the approach that they've been doing with patrols and particularly patrolling our, our major arteries are great. We have some camera systems, and we're enhancing those that are great for identifying license plates for vehicles who are trouble vehicles and may have been spotted involved in a crime. So I want to just can make sure that we give them all the resources that we can so that they can do their job.
Thanks. Sam, we're giving you the next, the same question. I am worried about crime. What are your thoughts on crime and how will you support public safety efforts?
Yeah, safety, safety is very key to me, and I would like to work with the police, make sure that they have the, they have the best, they have, they have got all the resources here. For instance, let's hire more people, but also let's hire more people of different demographics here. Let's, let's, let's just not focus on, I mean, what I'm saying is, let us be inclusive in trying, when you go out and look for, for the police or when you do the hiring process here. And also, let us get, let's also involve, engage the community, you know? I may be able to know somebody's looking for work, maybe he's in a different community. So let us engaging, let us engage, let us get those town hall meetings. Let us all come to the voice of the table and say, the problem and the solutions of this, we can, we can resolve this, we can find solutions all, if we're all inclusive, if all we sit together at the table, and we can make, we can make better policing procedures here.
Well, Sam Mawangie, we come back to you for the next question, which is, everything in life is expensive. Can you share your philosophy on taxation and spending?
Well, thank you so much. I always believe in the one more thing, you only spend what you have. If you, if you don't have, you can't spend here. Myself, that's how I've raised my kid. Number one, save, save money for, in case of something happen in future, but also be prudent in your saving. I believe also in having a financial planning system here. We have a financial planning classes, education for the community. For the city, we have to work within the budget here. If you have a budget, if you don't have the money for, for a certain project, then that project, it can be passed on for the next time. We have to prioritize here. What is the best project, what's the best interest, what's the best projects for the community, for the city of, for the city of Champlin?
Thank you. Tim LaCroix, same question to you. Life, everything in life is expensive. Can you share your philosophy on taxation and spending?
Absolutely. I, I realize that the money that the City of Champlin works with is not money that they have themselves. It's money that comes from the citizens of the, of the City of Champlin. It's not our money. So because of that, I am very, very cautious about every penny that we spend. Let me tell you, part of the hardest part of being a Champlin City Council member is when it comes to budget season and making tough decisions on where that money needs to go. What are those priorities? Because like everything in your household, there always seems to be more bills, more needs, more goals than the dollars in the bank. So it's been very difficult, but trying to make those priorities, make sure that you get a value for everything that you spend, make sure that what you're spending are really the important things, and, and try to cut costs in every way possible. That is really my philosophy.
Tim, you'll be getting this question next, but I'm going to turn to the camera and face the voters because the question reads, this forum is one means of communicating with the voters. How will you enhance government transparency and improve communication from and to the residents?
Well, thank you. I think first of all, one of the best things that I've experienced is my phone number, my cellphone, my email is posted all over the City of Champlin's webpage, and I welcome direct communication. But as well, I think there's also, and of course, opportunities to come and address the city council through the open forum process. However, I think we, as a city, can do better with having, creating and establishing forums. My opponent here has mentioned, and I fully support the idea of town hall meetings. I know the mayor is opening up those sorts of things as well. Opportunities, community gatherings. Went out to the Night to Unite this past August and had a wonderful opportunity to engage. I'd like to see more events like that where the residents and citizens of Champlin can come and speak directly, ask questions, dialogue with what's going on. Again, building better community, giving us as elected officials a better ear in understanding what the community wants and needs.
Thank you. Sam, I'll give you the same question, which is, how will you enhance government transparency and improve communication from and to residents?
Well, thank you, thank you so much. My, I have three components here. Number one is open communication, host regular town hall meetings and online forums to discuss anything like city projects and make, and make wise decisions here. One thing about the open communication, I'm thinking about providing updates, for instance, like a budget allocations here for, for the next year. Talking about infrastructure plans via social media and newsletters here. For the open communication, again, I'm thinking about, we can improve it better when we have a digital newsletter, you know, where the, the city of residents, I can sign up and I can get information quickly without waiting for the fine print for the print. Public access to information, make city records, budgets, and meetings accessible on a user-friendly website here. And again, I believe also in engage community feedback, engage, encourage community feedback, implement a transparent system where residents can submit concerns, suggestions, and track their responses here to ensure accountability.
Thank you. Sam, you get the next question as well. With all the young people in Champlin, schools are certainly a topic of interest. Do you think the city council should have a strong relationship with the school district? Why or why not?
Well, thank you so much. I think we should. We should have a strong relationship with the, with the, with the schools. One thing is because we'd like to mentor them. We'd like to, we'd like to engage more participation with the, with the kids, with the youth because these are the future leaders of this, of this community. You find right now, because of the digital, social media, the kids are not pretty much engaged there, you know? But that can be a pathway to start those engagements and learn about how to run a successful city, a city government, a local city government here. So, so there can be a couple ways here. Number one, we partner with the schools. We partner with the schools, and we also encourage this visiting, you know, like tours. They come to us, the city, the city council, and they look at the way that things are done, you know, learn, learn about the procedures, and, and hopefully, maybe they'll be able to make decisions to be, to get engaged and join the council.
Thank you. Tim, same question to you. Do you think the city council should have a strong relationship with the school district? Why or why not?
Sure. I think the city ought to have a relationship, and we are in a unique situation where we share a school with Brooklyn Park. But of course, we need to have a strong relationship for a number of reasons. While we are, as a city council, city itself are not the school board, they make the direct decisions, we certainly can have a lot of influence and, and seek to build those closer ties and stronger relationships. We all are aware of the terrible things that can happen, and in fact, some of the scares that we've had even last school year. So part of that is making sure that we have a good, strong police relationship, building those relationships on that community level, whether it's cones with a cop or other sort of involvement with the police officers, as well as welcoming them, the, the kids in, as we do, to city council. But I think it's really vitally important that we maintain that good relationship so that we can put that, put influence on the school board and build that relationship with the students and staff as well.
Thank you. Current issue for the next question. The city council has recently been taking up an ordinance change for Mississippi River property owners to place storage units in front or side yards. That's not necessarily the question. The question is tied to that, though. Are there any city ordinances that you have thought should be considered or changed in the City of Champlin? And I believe this one goes to you first, Tim.
Well, I'm, you know, that's a great question because that is the exact ordinance. And not only that ordinance, but the, the flip side of that was that staff did a great job in going through and recognizing that certain setbacks that, that staff thought were in place, that would apply to the rest of the properties, that is, the properties outside of the river, homes, were not bound by that rigid setback, not necessarily the, the storage structure, but the setback, how far they are from the city streets. That was one of the best things that I saw come through. So if you asked me that question last month, that would have been my answer. I, I, I think it's very vital that we have some variance with our river lots since they tend to be very deep and with a lot of, a lot of variance there. But I think having the flexibility, particularly as lot sizes tend to shrink here, and having a greater variance and variability for homeowners to build and to construct on their property.
Thanks. Sam, I'll give you the shorthand version of that question. Are there any city ordinances that you thought should be considered or changed in the City of Champlin?
Currently, I don't think I have got. I don't have any. I, I don't have any, but I can, I can just comment about the one from Mississippi. And the concern has been raised because most people, they are not, they have not been really, there have been not enough engagement. So, so the information going to the community, information going to, to some of the residents who live along, along the Mississippi, I think it's kind of confusing. I, I want to reach out and say, if we have a, a town hall meeting or we have the, the right information, town hall meeting, I think this will be an educative moment to the residents and understand what is actually, what's going on and basically what is needed here. So that's all what I can say from what I've heard from the, from the residents here. Not all of them, they know, they don't understand the, the ordinance here.
Thanks. I, this next question will be going to you, Sam. It's, I believe, a topic both of you have actually mentioned in previous answers somewhere along the way tonight. About one in five residents of Champlin are persons of color. What will you do to make Champlin and its city government more inclusive?
Well, thank you so much. There are a couple words you can do with this. Number one, I believe in community engagement here. We need, we have the new people, especially the new people moving up to this city, they, we need to have events, events like a Taste of Champlin. You know, Taste of Champlin whereby we meet all of us here together and we have different foods and we talk about how we can be able to make this city event here. We can make the city vibrant and proactive here. Again, we need to start, we need to talk about, we need also to have a community engagement facilitator from the City of Champlin here. This is a person who is hired, a person who is reach out to the, to the new immigrants, reach out to the new people who are moving to the city. The key component about it is that these people, they want to learn about the community, they love this community, and they're coming here because, number one, it's the best place to live here. It's there, it's very healthy, and also, it's very safe here. So we reach out, a couple things we can reach out. Number one, we send out welcoming newsletters, welcoming information to the, to the new residents who are coming in. I think that is going to improve the, the participation and also they're going to feel that they're at home in this community.
Thank you. Tim, I'll give you the same question here. About one in five residents of Champlin are persons of color. What will you do to make Champlin and its city government more inclusive?
You know, that's a great question because we have a very long history here, and as my opponent has raised and has been raised here, there has been a shift in, in demographics. I think it's really incumbent upon the city, and, and I think it's reflective of what our community is about, that we are inclusive, that we continue our community engagement that we already have and seek to enhance that. I think we, with our Champlin crossings, our Mississippi crossings, and our various other community events, making sure that we just are doing what City of Champlin has always done, have open arms and open lines of communication. I think going back and having more of these forums where we can have smaller groups would allow individuals who may feel like they're not being included to come and be able to have a voice more specifically, more directly to those who are in the city council and in leadership, so we can make sure that we foster that communication and build that community, sense of community for everyone.
Thank you. Well, we're moving now to the last question of the evening. First of all, this is going to be a two-part question, so to both you and to our timers. This is going to be, give you ninety seconds rather than the one minute, if you need to use up to ninety seconds. And this comes from our partners with QCTV. Do you support Minnesota legislation to modernize the funding structure for local Uh do you support Minnesota legislation to modernize the funding structure for local community media stations like QCTV? So that's the first part. Do you support legislation to modernize the funding structure? Second part, how will you, as a city official, work to get state legislation passed to support local community media and allow cities to retain local control of rights of way and ensure that all providers pay their fair share? So the key part on the second is retaining that local control of right of way and ensuring that the providers will pay their fair share. So two-part question. Tim, this one goes to you first.
Yeah, thank you. Uh I think local TV is a great means of communication. Um it's not the primary means anymore, but I think certainly there are ways that we, I would like to see, um even our own local station here enhanced through um streaming and other services. So yes, to the extent that a a legislation would help um our local community uh TV stations to um modernize and to take advan- advantage of even more modern ways of communication, definitely support that. Um I definitely support all our communities paying their fair share, and I look at the program and it's something that we've discussed in the council and I've discussed with my other um friends and neighbors, particularly when it comes to the programming, and making sure that Champlin does have a fair representation amongst our other neighbors and that that everyone is is covering those costs and expenses. But I definitely want to see uh that, to make sure that each municipality that that may have a part in that is getting equal time and equal pay to to make all that happen.
Thank you so much, Sam. I'm gonna sort of shorthand it here for you. The first part was uh supporting legislation to modernize the funding structure for stations like QCTV. Second part was, uh how will you work towards helping them to retain local control of rights of way and ensure that all providers pay their fair share? Again, ninety-second option for you here.
Okay. Yeah, thank you. Yeah, I do support our, I support our local uh legislation to improve, uh to improve our local, our our local media here. Uh we can make it more proactive by, again, by engaging more uh more democrat, uh by engaging more people. I mean, having a diverse, a diverse program, so uh there can be uh, when we bring more people to, when we bring uh diversity uh within the local media, uh it's it's gonna keep it more active, uh it's gonna bring a talent, and also, uh it's gonna uh e- e- bring more uh mo- more revenue uh to the uh to 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 our local community. But how, again, this can be through uh through uh collaboration here. I I I, we can be able to to make it work, I I I think we 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 should be able to start uh working with the with senators and a state representative also, you know, uh and getting those funding uh through the selection, uh funding to modernize the, to modernize the equipment, uh funding to get uh translators for uh for the new, for the new immigrants who are moving to our city here.
Thank you. Well, Sam Mwangi, we're going to turn to you for your closing statement at this time.
Thank you. Well, thank you so much. My name is Sam Mwangi. Like I said, I've lived for the last nineteen years. Uh the city of Champlin is the best place to live, but like we have talked today, it is evolving, and with the changes comes the need for fresh ideas and innovating leadership here. Our community is growing diverse, and we must embarrass this by fostering inclusivity, improving public safety, and increasing engagement with all the residents here. My vision, my vision is to ensure that everyone in the city of Champlin has a voice and is in a place in shaping our future. Together, we can create a vibrant life, a vibrant, safe, welcome city for all and bring the experience, I bring the experience, the passion, and the commitment to make Champlin thrive. So let's move forward with fresh perspective, ideas, and build a stronger community for generations to come. Give me the opportunity. Thank you so much.
Thank you. And Tim La Croix, your opportunity for your closing statement, please.
Thank you again, Wes. Uh I really want to continue the work that I've started here in Champlin. I want to see the Mississippi crossings project completed uh to grant grant uh greater access to all of our community, to the our our beautiful river waterway. I want to build on the great things that our city has done uh in in the past. I want to help uh with some of the challenges that are ahead. Uh we live in an economy where everything today costs more expense, was cost more than it did a year ago. I want to make sure that we continue to use the city resources efficiently. I want to use your tax dollars in the most responsible way, and I want to work to help our city provide the services and resources that 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 all our city and that my neighbors and Ward Four need, no matter what their background, no matter what their income. We live in one of the most economically diverse wards with some of the most expensive houses on the river and to some of the more of most affordable. It welcomes a diversity of 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 people, and I want to make sure that we all have what we need to build and make our city city better, and I do ask for your vote.
Thank you. Well, thank you to both candidates for the Ward Four seat. I think you're giving the voters a great choice between the two of you. You were very informative, and we appreciate you taking the time to share those views with the public through your participation tonight in our Meet the Candidates forum. The League of Women Voters has supported informed voting for over one hundred years. In the year twenty twenty-four, we have many options for how we vote. Please exercise your right to vote. For more election information, visit the Minnesota Secretary of State's website at mnvotes.org, or you can go to the League of Women Voters Minnesota website, vote411. Thank you and good evening.